We are live. Wow. All right, everyone. Welcome to the 2021 Wind Up City Council Debate. We are going to take a few minutes to let everyone log on, get settled. If you are coming to us and you had saw our post about directing your comments to the WindUpJC's Facebook page, what we want to tell you is we experienced a little bit of a technical difficulty, so we're going to move that, all those comments, over to WindUpMovingForward. So if you're at the JC's page now, go ahead and move over to WindUpMovingForward. If you want to go ahead and comment, or have a question, or you have any concerns, it will be broadcasted from both places. It's just we're taking questions from WindUpMovingForward. So while we wait for everyone to kind of get settled, I have an icebreaker question. This is for everyone, audience included. If you could have one Bob Joe's flavor for your entire life, what would it be?
Twist.
A small twist in a sugar cone with rainbow sprinkles.
Solid choices.
A small toasted coconut rolled in toasted coconut.
Ooh, always a good choice.
Pistachio.
Megan, you're a pistachio lover too, huh?
Yes, pistachio with rainbow sprinkles.
I am aware that the other flavors are probably incredibly good, but I don't think I've ever ordered anything that was not a twisted sugar cone with rainbow sprinkles since I was like four. And you know, at this point, I just can't change it.
When I could have it, I would do the twist in a cup with the toasted coconut.
That sounds good. Has anybody made it there yet? They've been open for what, three or four days now?
My class took a walking field trip there today, so we all got Bob Joe's.
The grandkids are coming over over the weekend, so I think we're gonna take a ride over there and go get one.
Megan, how's the feed looking? Is everyone kind of logging in and getting settled?
Megan, you're muted.
It looks like there are six shares and one comment thus far.
I'm seeing eighty people, eighty viewers right now.
Do we want to wait another minute or two, or do we want to get started?
I would say maybe wait literally one more minute.
Okay.
And then go ahead and get going.
All right. Another icebreaker who broke down and turned on the air today.
Oh, no, not at all. Open up the windows with fresh air in.
It was seventy-seven in the house, and I'm like, oh my goodness, I'm gonna have to break down and turn this on. I have a bungalow, so bungalow living, it's very hot upstairs.
Get the cross breeze going. Open up your front and back windows.
As soon as I got home from work today, I work on the, I was on the second floor of Monroe today, and that is a hot box. So as soon as I came home, turned the air conditioning on.
All right.
Don't they open up the windows on the second floor, Nick? That's where I went to elementary school back in the seventies.
Oh, yes.
Before your time, I'm sure.
The window's definitely open, but it's still very warm up there.
All right, I think everybody's in and settled. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I want to welcome everyone once again to the 2021 WindUp City Council Debate. We know it's a beautiful day outside, and you're choosing to spend that time with us, so we thank you so much. When we created this program, it was our goal to create an interactive, informative, and innovative format to have a two-way conversation with the whole fam, with the whole community. It was also important to us to make sure this was data-driven. So we asked the community a series of questions in about different areas, and we asked for their feedback in, with their experiences. And in those areas, we asked about neighborhood stabilization, neighborhood development, community enrichment, the local economy, and public relations. And when we went ahead and did the survey, we formulated our questions based on common, community concerns. So we were able to identify those areas, and then we based our questions from that data. And in doing so, it solely focused on the community needs and removed any bias. So what you're gonna see from us tonight is we are going to ask a series of questions to the candidates based in those five areas and based on your feedback. Those candidates, we're going to have a minute to introduce themselves, two minutes to answer each question, a forty-five second rebuttal if needed. And when we end our moderator questions, we're going to take audience question, questions from the audience. So if you have questions, comments, concerns, go ahead and pop them in the comments at WindUpMovingForward. So I know, as previously stated, we had said, go over to WindUpJC's. You can certainly watch it from there. But if you would like to ask a question, or if you don't know how to obtain an absentee ballot, Councilwoman Mayani is going to be assisting you in the chat. So let's introduce ourselves, and then we'll introduce the candidates, and we'll get started. So who we have with us today is Joel Atkins. Joel is going to be serving as the timekeeper. He is going to give candidates both a visual and audio cue when they have fifteen seconds left in their response times. We also have with us Councilwoman Megan Mayani today. She's going to be assisting you in the chat. So if you have, again, any questions, comments, concerns, you need to know how to vote, how to get a ballot, go ahead and ask that on the WindUpMovingForward page, and Megan will take care of you. Our moderators today are, is myself, Maria Broll, and Spencer Genrich. A little bit about my background. I am a former educator, and I worked customer service at WindUp City Hall and at Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan. So I leaned heavily into my experience as an educator and my experience at the front counter of WindUp City Hall. And if you've been in WindUp City Hall, then you know that that front counter is the information hub of the community and is one of the most public-facing entities of the city. So in that time, I fielded your questions, comments, concerns. I explained to you different functions of the city, helped you get a better understanding. So I pulled from those experiences and your feedback in my professional career to assist in the, making the community survey and coming up with the questions. And I'll have my co-moderator Spencer introduce herself, as well as the candidates, and we'll get started.
Yes. So hi, I'm Spencer. I am a WindUp alum. I also am a dance teacher at Down River Dance Academy that's been in WindUp for over, well, formerly Beverly Morrison School of Dance that's been in WindUp for over sixty years. And I am also a former candidate for the WindUp School Board. So we're gonna go ahead and move into introducing our candidates. I do want to share that we will have four candidates with us tonight. Invitations were extended to all other candidates. Feel free to, you know, reach out to them via Facebook or other ways to get any information, follow up with any of the candidates here tonight through Facebook, and I'm sure that Megan will be sharing any kind of like direct contact on the Facebook page as well. So tonight, we have with us a candidate, Nick Bevins, Mike Isbicky, Rosemary Sherian, and Kelly Steck. So I'm going to go ahead, we're gonna just start in alphabetical order. I want you to like essentially give us our little like, little spiel, what made you run? What was your lightbulb moment? What's your greatest passion for being on city council? What was that, what was that lightbulb? So why don't we start with Nick?
Good evening. Hello. Thank you, Spencer, and Maria, and Megan, and Joel, and the WindUpJC's, and WindUpMovingForward for putting this whole event together and being here tonight. Like Spencer said, my name is Nick Bevan, candidate for WindUp City Council. My partner and I own our home here in the city. I also work in our public schools as a teacher, and I'm on the Beautification Commission as a commissioner. And running for city council for me was not necessarily to add a line item on my resume, but because I truly care about the people and the businesses that call the city home. As a kid, it was always kind of ingrained in me that our purpose in life is greater than ourselves. I mean, that's what drives me every day to the classroom, and that's what drives this campaign for me, and kind of ultimately led to that decision to run for city council. Was because I care so deeply about my neighbors and just moving our city forward in a positive direction. So again, thank you again for being here tonight, and I hope to earn your vote.
Great, thank you. Now we're going to move on to Mike Isbicky. Please share with us a little bit about you. What made you want to run?
Um, once again, thank you, everybody, for the invite tonight. I think it's gonna be a great session. You know, over the last few years, I want to probably say eight to ten years, it seems like the council has lost focus with the neighborhood. My understanding for city council is to support the citizens of the city. And I don't think that there's been enough support to our citizens, specifically those who have lived here for numerous number of years. I myself have been a lifelong member, or a lifelong citizen here, fifty-seven years, born and raised, and
Fifteen seconds.
We need to get more focused onto what the citizens need and what their, their wants are for the city of WindUp.
Thank you. All right, and we are going to move on to Rosemary Sherian.
Well, thank you all for having me. I'm very excited to be here tonight. A little bit about myself, I've, am a mom to two, two boys that on both are either a product of WindUp Schools, or I have an eighth grader at Wilson right now, and they're my, you know, my pride and joy. I've been a teacher since two thousand eight for my, or I'm sorry, worked for WindUp Public Schools since two thousand eight. I'm very involved with coaching Special Olympics, the green schools, I fostered through shelter to home. So I'm already like fairly involved in the community, so I just wanted to help. The, the city is pretty great, but I think that with anything, it could be improved. So I have, I have a lot of energy and, you know, experience with like grant rate, grant writing and fundraising. So I just wanted to take that and transfer it from the schools to the city.
Great, thank you. And Kelly Steck.
Hi, echoing the thanks to all of you for putting this together and for having us, and everybody who's logged on on Facebook tonight. I'm Kelly Steck. I use she/her pronouns. I'm running for city council, in short, because I love this city and I was asked to. I work as a legislative director at the State House, as well as an implementation coordinator on a CDC-funded grant to reduce violence and bullying in schools. So listening to other people's concerns and making positive change is something that matters very deeply for, to me. And I wanted to build back into the community that raised me, which is why I'm building my life in my home in WindUp. And when folks who are very politically similar and very politically different from me asked me to take on this role and to run for this office, I was happy to do it, because if I can inspire and foster conversations where we can hear each other and really understand each other, I think we can make WindUp even better than it already is.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna head into the questions. We're going to rotate who goes first, who goes second, who goes third. It's never comfortable for someone to go first all the time. And we're going to start with neighborhood stabilization. In key areas of neighborhood stabilization, such as public safety, community cleanliness, city services, and city infrastructure, the public had mostly positive feedback. However, the public expressed overall dissatisfaction with the current code enforcement strategies, ranging from maintenance of city-owned properties to enforcement inconsistencies in residential areas. This conversation seems to be a longstanding issue in the community. In what ways can our current code enforcement strategies be improved in order to keep our neighborhoods well-maintained? Nick, what are your thoughts?
When it comes to that, that's a very similar concern that I've heard from a lot of residents. So thank you for bringing that up tonight. I really believe that it comes from making sure that our city employees have the resources to do their job, and that they have the resources, and I would love to see that our code enforcement officers become full-time employees within our city. I believe that because they have a more vested interest in our community, and it comes from checks and balances throughout the whole process. So we see this as an issue. You build a home, or for whatever reason, you get one report back from the one inspector, another inspector goes in, or code enforcement, I should say, and you get other things back. And that is not always a bad thing, right? We're all human. We make mistakes. We miss things, and that is A-OK. But I think it comes from more checks and balances through the process, and just making sure that our employees have the training and resources and tools that they need to accurately do their jobs.
Great, thank you. Mike Isbicky, what are your thoughts on our current code enforcement strategies, and how can they be improved?
You know, I, this is, this has been an ongoing problem, I want to say, for the last eight to ten years. As time has progressed, we've always lost our, our ordinance officers. We used to have three at one point back in the day. Now we're down to one. That, we need to get more bodies enriched into our ordinances, and to get them out to do the inspections that they need to do, to get the, get the neighborhoods cleaned up. And I mean, it's, it's, it's an issue, and I feel for the citizens. I know, I'm, I've gone through issues in my own neighborhood with this, and I don't understand why it's not going on. But as time has progressed, I've learned a lot more as things are going on. And we just need to get some more ordinance officers out there. We need to get more participation within her city, or within our cit, from our citizens, I'm sorry. And hopefully, we can get this matter resolved.
All right, thank you. Rosemary Sherian, what are your thoughts on code enforcement strategies? Where can we do better?
Oh, as far as code enforcement goes, I've heard stories of people purchasing a home in WindUp, and then they have one inspector, or one code enforcement come through, and then they have another one come in the next time, and I'll, you know, it's, it's not consistent. The, the things that they find, and so I've, I've heard that repeatedly. I believe we have a couple of part-time code enforcement officers. So just getting that more consistency would be, you know, like Mike said, like full, full-time employees and, and getting more, I mean, I know human error is just part of the deal, but, um, you know, getting the consistency down, and also helping, like, a lot of these homes are older, and sometimes people aren't fixed incomes, and they can't, they can't help it. So maybe finding some kind of grants, or doing some kind of partnership with like the schools to, you know, to get people's lawn care up to date and everything. You know, helping out the people that really need it, because light is one of the biggest complaints I've also heard from residents as well. So I'm just kind of problem-solving those would be, would be really nice. And, you know, just, just incentivizing, just having a nice, nicer property.
Thank you so much. Kelly Steck, your thoughts on code enforcement strategies, and what can we do better?
Thank you. The hard thing about being last, of course, is that all the good answers are already taken. So I'm going to echo what my fellow candidates have said, and also just point out that when we're doing something like data work, you know, we have multiple people code the same thing, and we look at how they have individually coded it to see where there are similarities and where there are differences. And I think that perhaps there's room to look into the processes by which we're training our code enforcement officers, have more conversations about when something rises to the level of an infraction versus when a warning is issued, how the codes are applied, are they applied fairly and equally across properties? And of course, I think part of this is encouraging residents to remember that we are a community that cares about each other. And part of caring for each other and caring for our community is caring for the property that we reside on, and ensuring that we're being respectful of our neighbors. So I think it's a twofold conversation that involves both community members and our enforcement officers, and just, you know, creating a bigger, broader strategy that pulls the whole community in.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our next question. So we asked participants, what can the city do to improve neighborhood stabilization? Nearly half of all who responded expressed that they would prefer to have services such as curbside recycling and yard waste removal included in their city services opposed to paid add-on subscriptions. Other neighboring cities include these amenities and also provide the totes. For example, Lincoln Park offers solid waste removal, recycling, and composting in a partnership with Green for Life. So what are your thoughts on expanding city services, and how would you go about incorporating any changes? And for this, we're going to start with Mike Isbicky.
You know, that, you know, I, I love the curbside recycling. Unfortunately, you know, I don't think at this time that, I mean, I would love to include it, you know, in a whole package deal. And I think we could do that, but I think right now, we've, we're in a crisis of the budget with monies and funding to get all that stuff rolled in. I thought that the, the large canisters for your pick, trash pickup was a fantastic idea. The curbside recycling, yeah, unfortunately, you know, you're gonna be paying the extra workers. We have to pay that. So eventually, there's gonna, I don't think there's any, I mean, you can't give everything away for free. You know, being in, working with finances to get that done, that's, that's a difficult decision that would have to be made. I mean, I would like to have everybody have free of charge on that. But physically, right now, in today's economy, with the extra help that you have to hire in to get this stuff picked up, I don't know if that would be something that is feasible at this time.
Thank you. And now we're going to move to Rosemary Sherian.
Yeah, I've had a lot of residents express to me that they would like curbside recycling, and I believe that city council should be the voice of the people. But first, I would want to definitely do like a cost analysis of how much it would cost to get that to every resident, and then kind of get a survey of how many residents would be willing to, to pay, pay higher taxes in order to actually get that. So it's, it is a very valid want, because a lot of local, a lot of neighboring cities do have that service, and it, you know, and it's good for the environment. And I do know a lot of my neighbors already purchased that, any, you know, pay waste management for the totes every two weeks anyway. So I definitely think that would be something to look into.
Great, thank you. And Kelly Steck.
Thanks. I believe sort of fundamentally in this principle of give people the truth, the entire truth, and let them make a decision. So much like Rose and Mike, I have heard these complaints, but I've also talked with our city treasurer and our finance folks, and I know that WindUp runs an incredibly lean budget. So what I think needs to be done is for this to go to the ballot after a study is done, and we can ask residents directly through voting, would you be willing to pay X mils more in taxes in order for curbside recycling, garbage or totes, and yard waste to be picked up as a function of city services? I think this is something, because we are dealing with tax dollars directly, that needs to be a vote of the people, but I would certainly be willing to look into getting that on the ballot and getting people the information on exactly how much their taxes would change if such services were offered.
Thank you. And Nick Bevan.
Yes, so beyond what we've already spoken about, and the cost associated with adding those services, we know that it would be an increase in obviously the cost to provide those services. To me, it is kind of a priority that I, I really do want to address this issue. For me, it comes from an accessibility standpoint. We have residents who are homebound. We have residents who may not have vehicles to transport large yard waste items or recyclables to our recycling center, which is an amazing community resource. And I, absolutely no matter if we have curbside or not curbside, the recycling center is a huge resource to our city and needs to remain a part of our community. Though, when it comes to curbside services, it is going to cost us more money, and that is going to come, and I agree with Kelly bringing it to the people. If this is something that you're interested in, it's going to cost us money in order to do it. And Mike and Rose also talking about how lean our budget is, and I think that's very important that our community knows that as well. But it is a priority for me based on accessibility to ensure that all residents have an equal experience with our city services, and that we're not charging people an extra fee because they are unable to participate in something.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to neighborhood development. Arguably, McKinley School is the most contested neighborhood development project. We asked for community feedback on the redevelopment of McKinley School, and the public either strongly disagreed or were indifferent. This is a very complex issue to unpack. There's a legally binding purchase agreement. There's a public push to save the park, along with a number of other concerns that range from increased traffic to the area and the impact of bringing a business into a residential neighborhood. In your view, where did the city go wrong? And if faced with a future development project of this nature, how would you handle the situation differently? Kelly Steck, we'll go to you first.
Sure. Thank you for asking. I feel like you could see all of our faces when the word McKinley was brought up. I know we've all been answering a lot of residents' questions about this for a long time. But, so just to address the current project a little bit, it is in the hands of the Planning Commission. They are fantastic people. They will do their best to ensure that standards are met and kept, and that the residents hopefully get to keep their park exactly where it is. But moving forward and thinking about future projects like this, because we do know that there will be city properties where this happens again and again, and we have to be mindful of the needs of residents, and not only mindful, but proactively engaging. Anytime the city has a piece of property that they are thinking about selling, there should be a series of community hours and town halls where the city council and the planning commission, as many members as can make it, listen to feedback from residents on what they would most ideally like to be, see in that space. Perhaps a community center or something of the like. From there, it should go to the engineering department. These fine folks have degrees in this, and they know what they're talking about. So they can then narrow down the ideas that the residents have given into what's feasible, given our budget, who is looking to buy the property, and what the city needs as far as our strategic plan. From there, that should be given to the council, who can then make a final decision on the project. Thank you. But yes, yes, proactive engagement in future scenarios like this is very deeply important to me, and I look forward to seeing what my fellow candidates have to say on the subjects as well.
Great, thank you. Nick Bevins, where did you think the city went wrong, and how would you handle the situation differently?
I think that the situation that we're currently in with the McKinley School development is a great example of the, the lack of communication that exists between our community and our local government. We know that the community already opposed developments happening at that location from the first time, right? We had that, the initial proposal of the senior housing. So when the second proposal or amendment, I should say, came through, and the, the property was different. I think at that point in time, we should have been more critical of the update, and been more communicative to their community and involving them in the conversation. Yes, we are involved in a, an assigned purchase agreement, and we need to move forward. But it's also important that everybody has a seat at the table. It's not just eight, six people around a horseshoe making decisions for our community. Everybody has a seat at the table, and everybody should have a choice in that. Everybody should be involved in that decision, especially the neighborhoods that are affected most and the voters that are affected most. We have a park that is central to our community that I truly believe needs to remain in that spot, not only for the families currently living there, but when families are home- Not only for the families currently living there, but when families are home shopping. They're going to pick a neighborhood where they can see their families growing and thriving and their kids going to the local park and not having to leave the neighborhood to enjoy it. So as far as where I stand on the issue, I stand with the neighbors and I understand their frustrations and continue to oppose the current amendment.
Great, thank you. Mike Isbicky. Where did the city go wrong in the McKinley School project and what would you, what would you do to handle the situation differently?
You know, i- it's really sad that this is an issue that's been going on for the last eight years with council. And it's very disappointing that the first proposal was changed without the notification of the, the neighborhood. I think Kelly and Nick have hit every viewpoint that I would stand behind and back. I mean, I, I, I really, my heart goes out to the residents of that neighborhood. Because the proposal now with moving the park and what they're planning on doing is just, I mean, it's downward, ludicrous, I'm sorry. But that, that's how I feel and, you know. I can't reiterate, just like I said with Kelly and Nick, you guys hit it on the head. And my comments would be a ditto to you. I mean, there's, I mean, it is what it is, but we do need to get this resolved and we need a strong council. To get this resolved, whether it's with the planning commission. But this has got to go within the next term because I cannot foresee this going on for another four years without some kind of solid. Solution. So Kelly and Nick, thank you for your comments and Megan, I'm, or Rob. Rose, I'm sure you're probably right behind us, so I'll thank you ahead of time.
All right, thank you. And Rosemary Sharian. McKinley School, where did the city go wrong and how can we handle things differently going forward?
Yeah, so this has been going on since the previous city council and it is just continuing to, to be an issue. I think that a main problem is transparency and communication with, with what's going on with the residents. They're saying, you know, like if, if they want to build the driveway, they have to, you know, provide, you know, notification and get it approved and everything. So I think that a lot of residents were just very blindsided by the, the amendment when they wanted to remove the park. And I am 100% in favor of keeping the park where it is. I've heard residents say that they would move out of the, of the neighborhood. Because, you know, they have children and, and the, the proposed. Placement of the new park is just not, I don't think it's, it's a good solution at all. So I, you know, like Mike said, you know, we need a strong council to kind of, you know. Make sure that this issue just doesn't keep, keep going and going. And yeah, I, I, I know that we're in a binding contract and there's not an easy solution to the problem. But I definitely hope that there can be a compromise between the developer and the residents of the neighborhood. To keep the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question. When we asked the public how they felt about the council's decision to disallow cannabis dispensaries in Windout. There were a range of strong opinions at the opposing the issue. Some very strongly agreed with the council's decisions and others very strongly disagreed. We are navigating very polarizing times. How would you handle the cannabis conversation going forward as well as polarizing public issues in the future? And we're going to start with Nick Bevan.
Thank you for the question. When it comes to issues like this, these are things that affect our community. And I really want to see issues as large as this being brought before the community and making sure that everyone is being heard. That these are proposals and these issues would be something that we would put on a ballot. To hear from the residents and allow them to have their voice heard. Instead of just the opinions around, again, those six representatives around the horseshoe. For me personally, I don't have any moral objections to it, though. I know that we're missing a large tax, like income coming from it. But there are a lot of valid concerns that come along with that process. And I think it's important that we, we vote on it as a city. And the residents really are able to, to voice their opinion in the form of a vote. Also, I think it's important for us to understand that just legalizing or allowing those businesses to operate within our community doesn't mean that we don't have control over that. We have the ability to limit the licenses that we provide and to direct them to where they can open up within our city. So there are still a lot of limitations that we can have in place to ensure that our community remains a safe place to raise our families. And a great community for my own students to go back to. So again, when it comes to these big, large proposals that we have a lot of polarizing views on. It's important that we start a conversation that we make sure everyone is heard, even if they were to disagree with me, I still want to hear you. Because I am here to represent you. And at the end of the day, I would like to see a ballot proposal so that our residents can truly have a voice in the process.
Thank you. Mike Isbicky, same question.
Yeah, this has been a, a question that's been brought to me. And personally, I would say, yes, this is, this is such an issue. I would have to, we would have to bring it up in front of the, the citizens and let them decide on how they want to do it. Personally, I am not for this. You know, working through the FOP. There's a lot of issues that are going on nowadays that are affecting our younger kids. And we, we've got to get a control on that. I feel sorry for our officers that have to go out and have to deal with the issues that are going on with drug-related issues. But it would be up to the people to decide on what they want to do on that. And I would have to put it out to their, yes, we need to have a lot of discussion on that. Personally, no, I would, I would, I'm sorry, I'm against that.
Thank you. Rosemary Sharian.
Yeah, so I think that there should be data-driven. I, I would want to, first of all, do a crime study of the cities that do have, you know. That either dispensaries or, or whatever in those cities. And, and then survey, you know, or put it on the ballot like Nick said to get, you know. To get the opinion of the residents. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, it would depend on what, what the residents favor. You know, because there, there's money involved, you know, if it's, if it's regulated and, you know, this could be a source of, you know, tax revenue. But ultimately, I think it should be a decision of the citizens of Windout.
Thank you. And Kelly Steck.
Yes, I of course am going to echo that this should come to the ballot for folks. But I do want to point out that because Windout has effectively opted out of this for so long. There have now been other communities who have had the chance to implement this first. Which means we have real data and we have real community evidence of what works and what doesn't as far as these ordinances. So I do believe that we need to have conversations with other communities across the state and see what has been good, what hasn't worked. And I do think that should we allow dispensaries to happen in Windout, they have no place on Biddle. It is vitally important to me that young people who are leaving high school on a half-day can't go, hey, mister someone. In a parking lot, I think that there might be a space for it on Fort Street or in some of the more industrial areas. But I do think that whatever we end up passing needs to be done, like I said, after the input of the voters. With the information of other communities across the state who have already done this. And ensuring that our young people are protected from it, or at least not strongly encouraged to do it just because it's there and available to them.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next question. We asked the community how they felt about three neighborhood development issues. The redevelopment of the former post office in McKinley School. As well as the current council's decision to disallow cannabis dispensaries. What we learned is that there seems to be a disconnect between developing projects and how they resonate with the public. What can be done to minimize this disconnect in the future? And we'll start with Mike Isbicky on this one.
Well, personally, not only the old post office, but the building that's going up to where the old police station is. I've seen postings, everybody's asking what's going on there and I'm getting like 50 different answers. I think we need to, as council, we need to make it clear. When there's any kind of restructure or new building that's going out. We need to let people know, put the signs out, you know, this coming in the future. Or, you know, coming soon. To let these people know what's going on. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing from the one on Jefferson, it's going to be an added jail cell, it's going to be another bar, it's going to be another medical center. And some other things I don't want even, want to repeat. But, you know, we need to make it clear so people of Windout know exactly what's going on in, in their city.
Thank you. Rosemary Sharian, same question.
I feel that transparency and communication is, is very important. And maybe letting, like, like Mike said, letting plans be known because there's a lot of false information that gets spread around. Whether it's, you know, what developments or whatnot, but I do like that they are. I, I do follow social media and see that, you know, the development with the post office is going to be the mixed, mixed youth. And I'm, I'm glad that they're actually redeveloping that. So I do think that. If there was more communication about, about development, I think that would be very helpful for the residents.
Thank you so much. Kelly Steck, your thoughts?
Yeah, so a lot of my work at the state legislature is translating. What happens inside the Lansing bubble and in legislative jargon into things that people can really understand and easily digest. And I think that it is so important that local government also offers something like that to people. I think that there should be more of an effort, whether by individual council people or directly through the city. To explain, because when you ask questions about things like that, a lot of times what you'll get as a response is. Well, you can go look up the council meeting minutes, it, it explains what we did. But if it's explained in legal jargon, it's not actually explained, there's just a bunch of words on a page about the question. So if I am elected, I plan to continue holding coffee hours and continue publishing these sort of how-to or department steam mystified documents. And I, you know, I'm looking forward to that challenge and I, I'm looking forward to a council that is more accountable to the residents.
Thank you so much. Nick Beavens, your thoughts?
Yes, I echo what all of the candidates have said so far. That the focus on transparency and clear and accessible communication. I mean, we should be able to go to the website and get, see things that are happening in our community. We should be able to access that information pretty quickly. And echoing what Kelly said, kind of de, de-jargonizing, if that's a word, de-jargonizing. A lot of those legal terms, because when we are asking about projects like the old post office or the old city hall, different projects like that. We, again, get forwarded to those 300-page agenda packets where that's not real, that's not realistic. And we should be excited about these developments. So I would like the city to be more mar- marketing themselves more and marketing these develops. Developments more in a way to communicate more clearly to our residents about the exciting things that are on the horizon.
Thank you. Okay, I think I was lagging a little bit. All right, moving on to our next question. So this will start with Rosemary Sharian. We asked the public about community enrichment opportunities in their neighborhoods. Bacon Library and our local museums were the shining stars of this category, receiving a five out of five rating from the community. However, participants went on to say that our parks and green spaces require updated equipment and better maintenance. This was such an important issue to the public that it was mentioned several times in other areas of the survey. Such as stabilization and neighborhood development. What can be done to improve arc and green spaces? Rosemary?
Yeah, so like we've kind of mentioned before, we, we kind of have not a lot of wiggle room in our budget. So maybe perhaps looking into grants. I know that Justin over at the recreation department is amazing and I know they, they keep up on like kind of. Cleaning up with vandalism and, and it's kind of a hard job for them. And I do know that they did get a grant, $40,000 for, it's kind of like a lending library of, of sports equipment. So I think, I think with the limited budget we have, if we had somebody that could look into grants or. You know, I, I, I know that a lot of us people that are running for city council right now, we have a lot of energy and motivation. And I think that a, a lot of us would be willing to look into those grants to make the green spaces and, and clean up the parks. Because it's, we'll be honest, we don't have a ton of money in our budget in order to, to do that. So, so I think that's, that's the solution to the problem is, is to, you know. Or even fundraising or whatever we need to do, ask the local businesses for something. You know, we've got some great businesses here that, that may be able to help. But, you know, sometimes it's looking outside of the budget that is, and, and just thinking outside of the box is what we need to do to solve those problems.
Thank you. Kelly Steck.
Yeah, echoing a lot of what Rose said, our city employees do the most with the least resources. They are really incredible, they're doing all the work they can, but that doesn't mean that residents' needs are being met. So we have to figure out how to fill these gaps. Something I would be very interested in is if Windout had sort of a monthly service Saturday. Where residents could come together and clean up the parks the way that we do clean up our downtown. Thank you Beautification Commission, shout out Nick. For, for doing that and putting those together. But I think especially coming out of COVID, folks are really looking for how they can be more invested. In their communities and in their neighborhoods. And I think sometimes all that they need is a door to be opened and for someone from the city to say, hey. I am going to spend Saturday from nine to 11 at Pulaski cleaning up, do you want to come? I think offering these invitations and building our commissions into something that is a real community engagement tool. Is going to be vitally important in filling that budget gap. And as Rose said, working with some of our local businesses who are really fantastic, seeing where we can get things at cost, seeing how we can work together. So that we can all work to improve those spaces instead of just leaving it shouldered on the recreation department.
Thank you. And Nick Bevan.
Yes, thank you. Echoing, I feel like we're saying that a lot, echoing, echoing, echoing. Rose and Kelly have brought up some very important points that our, our city employees are doing the best job that they can do with the resources that they have. And again, we have a lean budget, but we can look out for grants and resources to improve our green, green spaces and our playgrounds. We have many playgrounds that the equipment needs to be replaced. It needs a fresh coat of paint and those, we can do some of the fresh cones of paint and landscaping and taking pride in our neighborhoods through those community action days that Kelly. Alluded to, and I would love to see those happen. When we take pride in our communities, I think that we will really see kind of a revolution in that idea. That we, these are our spaces and that's something that we have learned in COVID, as we've been in our houses more, we've learned more about our neighborhoods, where our parks are. We maybe have discovered parks in Windout that we never knew existed. And it just comes, and I would say basically that I agree with Kelly and Rose. That we need to look out for these grant opportunities, our, get these community action days going. And thank our Parks and Rec Department for doing the best that they are doing with the limited resources they have available.
Thank you. And Mike Isbicky.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, over the years that the, the budgets for our parks and recreation has really gone down. Going back into the, into the seventies, parked down the street from me. I remember they used to bring the fire department out and they used to open up the fire hydrant, it was there. And in the wintertime, they would open up the fire hydrant and this water would freeze and we were able to go out there and ice skate. And I mean, we had the swing sets and the slides and. But going back into getting the grants fundraisers. You know, I'm personally, I'm really, we're, the wife and I are very big on doing fundraisers. Kelly, you're very familiar with. Kelly, you're very familiar with the fundraisers that we do throughout the city for different organizations. You know, and getting the community involvement, yeah, Saturday, two hours. What's two hours, especially if you have little ones that like to go to the park? And, you know, spend a couple hours with them, but go out there and pick up the mess and pick up the papers and get back to the, to the olden days. Other than I, you know, everybody's touched on everything. So when you're the last one, it's kind of like everything's been covered.
Thank you, Mike. We're going to move on to the local economy. We asked the community about areas of the local economy, such as small business support and events in the business district. Majority of participants responded that they attend Third Friday events only on occasion and would like Wyandotte to realign its party image so that it's more inclusive to additional businesses and better balanced for participants. How do we go about rebranding our public image so that our residents are more likely to participate in downtown events? Kelly Stack, what are your thoughts?
Excuse me, Maria, could you repeat that question that you were blocking? You were cutting off on me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and repeat it. Not a problem. We asked the community about areas of the local economy, such as small business support and events in the business district. Majority of participants responded that they attend Third Friday events only on occasion and would like Wyandotte to realign its party image so that it's more inclusive to additional businesses and better balanced for participants. How do we go about rebranding our public image so that our residents are more likely to participate in downtown events? Kelly Stack?
Sure, thank you. So I am officially, you know, going to bring it back to this idea that I've had for a youth commission where we could create a new commission with members between the ages of 15 and 30 who are focused on the needs of young people in the city. We talk constantly about the need to bring young people and young families to Wyandotte, but very rarely do we engage them in the decision making process, which is why I think so many past efforts have failed. I think through the development of that commission and allowing young people to say, this is what we're looking for from Third Fridays and from our downtown and from our community, we're going to see some new ideas that don't center on alcohol and offer an expanded area of engagement. I think in general, Wyandotte's downtown business district and social district do great things. But it is important that we offer things for people who are under 21 or sober or who simply have young families and children and can't spend their times at the bar. So I think engaging the residents in having these conversations and instead of saying, what don't you like? Framing it as what would you like to see will help us expand that programming and know what partners in the community and across the state we need to reach out to so that we can expand this. And instead of having, you know, nine twelfths of our Third Friday centered on alcohol, maybe a third still are. But we all open up more cultural engagement and other areas of programming and do better work at broadcasting what the Third Friday topic is and why we're doing it. So folks are more likely to come down and engage with our local businesses.
I would, Maria, you're muted, but I assume that we are moving on to mute. Is that correct?
You are correct.
All right. Thank you, Maria. I would echo what Kelly said as well, you know. It has been something that has come up along this campaign when I've been talking to residents is the amount of events that we have in the city that are focused on alcohol consumption. And it directly relates to the amount of times that we interact with individuals who are drunk while they're driving. These are incidences that, I mean, we can't, we can't negate the data there, right? We need to, when we're developing our events, make sure that our events are more inclusive of all of the families that live here in Wyandotte. We have families who don't want events during the day. We have businesses up and down Biddle, up and down Ford. We have community organizations that span a whole breadth of things here in our community. And we need to have events that are inclusive of all of those things. When we have events that are focused on alcohol consumption, like a wine crawl, and I would participate in that, I have participated in that. I think that as a city, we need to be more proactive in preventing drinking and driving from those events. This could come from working to continue that conversation that late May, Mayor Peterson began about the hotel. This comes from dedicating parking spots or areas for ride sharing services or taxi services to, so that people know that they can come to Wyandotte and enjoy these events, but we want them to get home safely. So I think it comes from being proactive in that form, but also, again, engaging the community and ensuring that all of our events are inclusive of as many people as possible.
All right, Mike is Vicky, your thoughts?
Hey, you know, personally, I attended a lot of events on the Third Friday. It's a good time, but yes, you know, we cannot just focus that just on alcohol consumption. The whole purpose of this when it was started was to gain more business to the shops in that downtown. You know, all the shops are open late. But whether they're participating, I don't see the revenue, of course, from these, these stores. So I don't know if it's a profitable thing to go for the stores or not. But it is a great evening, but we could also look into the younger people that are coming in with their, their younger kids and to maybe expand different venues as far as different activities for the kids, for the young ones. For the eight or five and six, or five to 10, you know, where their parents aren't going to be able to sit in the bar and have activities for them. And maybe we can intertwine that with an adult child activity area where the parents can actually get involved with their kids and participate in whatever event might be happening. And go from there.
Thank you. Rosemary Sherian, your thoughts?
Yeah, so I've heard a lot from the residents that they want more family friendly events going on, not so much centered on drinking. I know Third Fridays are great, but you know, when every Third Friday is centered on drinking, it's not so great. I did hear sentiments of residents wanting to bring back like the heritage days and cultural events that, you know, celebrate different cultures, like the Native Americans or Italians or Polish. So I think that would be something to look into. And, and, and when we do have these Third Friday events or the events in the summer, having the local vendors, I know sometimes they they get vendors from out of town. And I've heard complaints about, you know, if we have a vendor here, you know, like, you know, say this barbecue place is local, but we're getting some barbecue place from, you know, food truck from, you know, cities away. You know, I think that it's better to, to, to support local more. And, yeah, yeah, so a lot of, and the social district, I've heard, I've heard some pros and cons of both, but I do know that when I touched, talked to Archie Hamilton, he was in favor of it. So, but I have heard, you know, like some residents saying like, this is the time that kids get out of school. You know, it goes from 11 to eight. So, you know, imagine you get out of school and there's somebody walking down the street with a beer in their hand too. So, so, yeah, that's more family friendly is what I would be hoping for.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, still in local economy. We asked the public how well small businesses were supported by city leadership. The majority of responses was support as a three out of five. Given the challenges small businesses are currently facing, how can the city provide better support to its businesses? And we will start with Nick Beavent.
Thank you, Spencer. I think right now, our business, our small businesses are absolutely struggling as a result of this pandemic. But I think the fact that so many of our small businesses remain open and their doors still welcoming residents in is a testament to the strength of our small business community and a strength to our downtown development authority. Now, it's important that we also recognize that we have businesses in our city that are beyond the territory of our DDA, our Downtown Development Authority. They live along Fort Street, they live along Oak and Ford and Eureka. As we move forward to continue to strengthen our business community, I would like to see the Wyandotte Business Association be, bring back to life. There are businesses in our community that can benefit from the strength in numbers. When we have businesses working together, we can have more businesses open up, that network expands. And our business owners don't necessarily feel like they're on an island of their own. So I would like to see that come back and just our continued patronage of our local businesses and promoting them to residents. I think that is actually one of the positives and great things about Wyandotte is that we have such a strong small business community. We have very, we have a very small number of large chain stores that find their homes here. It is a lot of people achieving that American dream and keeping their doors open. And it is actually a huge proud, kind of like a proud point that I share every time I talk to someone about the city of Wyandotte.
Thank you. And Mike is Vicky.
Yeah, you know, our, our small business, excuse me, is not just on Biddle Avenue between Eureka and Oak. It spans from Biddle to Forest Street, Pennsylvania to Goddard. And there are a lot of businesses in between that area without that area. And a support to all of the businesses and not just specifically the downtown. We've, over the years, we've built downtown and it looks fabulous. I commend everybody that participates in the businesses and that. But let's not forget about the little guys that are on Oak Street or on Eureka or on North Line. We've got to include all the small businesses, not just those that are downtown.
Thank you. And Rosemary Sherian?
Yeah, so I agree, our DDA is a, is a strength. We've done well at keeping businesses afloat during the pandemic. However, like Mike said, you know, we need to support. I've seen a lot of businesses kind of come and go along those other areas, like along North Line, Eureka and Oak Street. So it'd be nice to, to kind of support those businesses as well. I do know that there was a lot of grants given out to, to small businesses during the pandemic. And I'm glad to see that they were used. And I have seen a lot of our local businesses looking for help. I know that's, that's been kind of an issue, a lot of job postings from, you know, from our local, local businesses as well. So, and it's hard during a pandemic to, to, to staff these businesses as well. So I think that's like, from what I've heard, that's, that's probably the big, biggest hurdle they're going through right now.
Thank you. And Kelly Stack?
Spencer, could you read the question to me one more time? I know we're talking about small businesses. I want to make sure that I am answering what you asked instead of just, you know, proselytizing about how much I love all of our local businesses.
Absolutely. We asked the public how well small businesses were supported by city leadership. The majority of responses rated small business support as a three out of five. Given the challenges small businesses are currently facing, how can the city provide better support to its businesses?
Fantastic. Thank you. So as with most problems, this is a multi-part thing that comes from the federal government all the way down. I think our small businesses right now, first of all, need the free and full allocation of all CARES Act dollars from the state so that they can be used to build back into our neighborhoods and our small businesses wherever they can be. And then on top of that, you know, just again echoing everything that everyone has already said. I think we do a really excellent job at Christmas time of saying, Small Business Saturday, shop local, buy local. I would love to see that transformed into a truly year round effort. I think sometimes folks forget that we have our own hardware stores, we have our own grocery stores in the city. And, you know, as everyone has said, our businesses go well beyond the bounds of downtown. I would so strongly encourage folks, next time you are on Amazon and ready to exit and hit confirm purchase, I have not made a purchase on Amazon in a long time and I forgot what checkout was for a second. But, but next time you're going to do that, think about it and say to yourself, is there a local business I could be supporting? Who can offer me the same product? And a lot of time, the answer is yes. I recently spoke with someone who made that decision. They chose to shop at one of the local hardware stores instead of buying something from Amazon. And they even gave her dog a treat when she went in to pick it up. These are people who live in our community and work in our community and want to build into us, and we have to build back into them. So I want to encourage all residents to shop local all the time. And I want to encourage city leadership to really make a push for this and do sort of more public service announcements about these businesses that exist and, and doing the work to encourage residents to shop local.
Thank you. Moving on to public relations. We asked participants about Wyandotte's relationship with the public. While community members were generally satisfied with their encounters with community leaders and departments, other areas such as transparency, communication and use of technology left much to be desired. In fact, this area is where Wyandotte scored the lowest. What can leaders do to make Wyandotte a more transparent, communicative and accessible place to live? Mike is Vicky.
You know, communication. It's been an issue for, you know, a communication gap has been coming up pretty much all evening here and there. But the transparencies between council, city government, different offices with compared to with their citizens, it's, we've got to make a drastic change on that. Talking to the people that I've, I've spoken with and their concern is they're, they're not getting anywhere. They try to address their issues and it feels like they're being ignored. So the communication definitely has to get done. And I, I'm hoping that whoever is coming in for the new council, whether it's me or not, that, you know, please take into consideration, we are here for the people of the Wyandotte. Not for ourselves and not to do what we would like, but for what we want for the citizens.
Thank you, Rosemary. Rosemary Sherian?
I think communication is very important, technology is very important. One thing that I would like to work on with the city is the, making sure that the city council meetings are broadcast, you know, in a, a up to date way. I know they've been struggling with the Zoom meetings and kind of the technology of the sound and everything. And it makes it, you know, trying to watch a city council meeting, sometimes I can't hear it correctly or, you know, just the accessibility of getting that. So, so one thing that I would hope that they would improve is the city council meetings, the technology. And maybe a lot of the parts of the city are good about posting things on social media. But I think that city council could do better at, you know, posting the agendas or sharing the communication and transparency about what's going on. Something that's really helped me to find out information about residents is having the, the coffee hour or the coffee chats that I've had. And, and just hearing residents talk about, you know, some, the random things that you never think about is amazing. So if, if elected, I would continue to hold those coffee chat, the coffee hours just to hear what the residents have to say. I have my Google phone number up on my, on my social media and my web, my email address. So I think it's important that council members reply to those emails. And, you know, in the past, I've emailed council members and have not heard a reply. So I think that accessibility is very important. And just responding, even if the response is, I'm not sure, let me check into this, I think that's very important.
Thank you. Kelly Stack?
Yes, so echoing what has already been said, I think COVID has really highlighted some problems for our city's accessibility. So on the one hand, it's really excellent because we have told disabled folks for a long time. If you can't come to city hall, you can't participate in a meeting, things have been very hard. They've been very reliant on being able to be physically present in spaces. And I think now we have all sort of realized, actually, it is possible. It's possible to build better systems that are, you know, more inclusive and It's possible to build better systems that are, you know, more inclusive and more able for everybody to join. But the city does have a long way to go. Having audio-only Zoom for Planning Commission is tough on the members. Half of us have never seen each other face to face. It doesn't make for good governance. Building relationships is ultimately how things get done. So I would really love to work with our IT department and see if there's anything that can be done on that, as well as the design of the website. You should not have to go, I'll click, let alone three or four, to sign up for our city's email updates. That should be something that you can find on the homepage and immediately subscribe to. And while I do think that social media is very important and I'm very grateful for the departments who put out those updates via Facebook and via Twitter, you shouldn't have to have a social media account to know what's going on in your city. I hesitate to ever make a promise, you know, I, I don't make promises I can't keep. But I do promise that if I am elected, I will continue to hold coffee hours and I will continue to proactively seek feedback from residents. I do think it is just so important to be accessible and responsive to members of the city, just like Rose said. So, and I know, you know, of the people here, we all agree that even if we don't make council, we want a transparent council. We want to train, or we want an accessible council and we know that residents do too.
Thank you. Nick Bevins.
Yeah, when it comes to improving our communication and transparency in the city, it's important that we leverage technology. And I think it's also important that we understand that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. The wheel is already made out there when it comes to municipal websites, when it comes to apps that you can download on a smartphone to get information at the, at your fingertip about the community that you live in. There are out-of-the-box solutions that already exist to provide these resources to us. Being accessible as council people is, I think, the number one thing. We need to be responsive to our emails and communications to residents. We need to continue to hold our coffee hours and coffee chats, as I believe Rose mentioned and Kelly mentioned and Mike have also mentioned. How, we hear things that maybe we didn't think of before. We're not super humans, right? And having these conversations and connecting with people and understanding maybe the unique challenges that exist for them. We can help to make Windup a better place for more than just them, for more people. If there's one person that is struggling with the accessibility of a certain thing within our city, there's most likely more people alongside them. And we want to make sure that everyone feels at home here in Windup. And that comes from redesigning our website in a way that is more user-friendly, that our communication out to residents doesn't just exist on social media, though social media is important, that it exists in multiple places. In an email sent out to you, we have a text messaging service that is inconsistent on what we notify residents about. When your road is being torn up in front of your home, you need to be notified with ample time. Especially in our city, we have a lot of residences that don't have driveways, my residents included. If they're going to tear up the street in front of our home, we need ample time to figure out our parking situation. So I think it just boils down to really focusing on the resident and focusing on the consumer side of the city.
And if I could add on that, don't forget too, we also have to take into consideration, there are still several people that don't have Facebook or a computer at home or, you know, the social media access. You know, back in the day, we used to, and I'm not showing my age, but there used to be notifications that came in your utility bill that, hey, this is coming up on this date and that date. You know, there are still people that do not have social media access. So maybe there's something that we could go back to in, you know, maybe for the next, maybe 10 years. By then, hopefully, everybody would be on social media. But, you know, I have family members that have no idea what Facebook is or social media. They haven't, they don't want anything to do with it. So the communication to them, maybe we still have to go into the olden days with pen and paper.
Thank you.
All right, and we are moving into our last two questions before we move into our community question. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out there so everyone can gauge where we're at. When we are, when asked about equity and resources, the majority of those who completed the survey viewed Windup as a community that lacked an accessibility to resources or did not feel they had an understanding to answer. How do you view Windup's equity of resources and services? And how do you plan to make Windup more equitable for historically oppressed populations as a council member? And this will start with Rose Sherian.
First of all, accessibility is very important. Universal design is, is important. For example, there's residents that use wheelchairs. And when we don't have, say, handicap parking, how can they assess access downtown Windup if there's nowhere for them to park? Or, you know, just, or even the city council meetings, like there's some people that are, that may be hard of hearing that can't hear the Zoom meetings. So we have to make sure that everyone has the same amount of accessibility. And Mike has a good point, there's some people that don't have the social media. So I'm making sure that if we don't reach people through social media, reaching them through other ways as well. I, I believe in inclusiveness and diversity and, and would hope that the city has, you know, policies that, that make things fair for everyone. Whether it's, you know, getting information out to residents or just making any kind of, you know, any kind of services fair for everyone.
Thank you. Kelly Stack.
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what Rose said and what Mike said and what Nick said in his previous answer, which is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel on some of these things. There are resources to make our systems and processes better. But in part, I'm running for council because I want Windup to be the place where every person wants to build a life. I think Windup is the best city in the world. And I want everyone, no matter what they look like or who they love or who they worship, to feel the same and to feel that Windup is a community that wants them here and values them and sees them as an us and not a them, you know? It's, it's really important and that means that sometimes there are going to be hard conversations. I live my life personally by three guiding values, which are sincerity, kindness, and empathy. And I think that leading with empathy as we have these discussions, as we say, you know, how have we not been welcoming in the past? How can we be more welcoming in the future is going to be incredibly important. Whoever is elected to city council has to recognize that the lives that we have led are not the lives that everybody else in the city has led. And we have to come into meetings and discussions with open minds and open hearts and ready to hear from people. And we also have to be ready to sometimes say, I made a mistake and I'm sorry. I think that simply being able to recognize that and approaching council with the humility to know that we're not always going to get everything right, but we will always listen, is vitally important. So that is really my plan to continue to live by these values and to have public hard conversations so we can work together to make Windup a place where everyone wants to live.
Thank you. And Nick Bevins.
I apologize, Spencer, can you reread the question again?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When asked about equity and resources, the majority of those who completed the survey viewed Windup a community that lacked equity and accessibility to resources or did not feel they had an understanding. Have you Windup's equity of resources and services? And how do you plan to make Windup more equitable for historically oppressed populations as a council?
Thank you, Spencer, for reading it again. When we think of the equity of the resources that exist within our community, one of the last US Census, Census indicated that thirteen and a half percent of our population lives at or below, below the poverty line. How do we support those residents to ensure that they can keep their lights on? That they can keep electric service to their homes? How do we support these families to ensure that they continue to be successful members and working partners within our community? Making sure that they have the resources that they need while supporting residents all along the socioeconomic scale. It's also important that we, as Kelly has said, we ensure that Windup is a place where everyone feels welcome and everyone feels that they can call home. I share an equal passion about the city and I love it so much. I grew up in Dearborn Heights, but I truly feel that Windup is my home. Neighbors talk to each other. There is such a small knit type sense to this community that you can't really get anywhere else. And that is so unique to Windup. As we continue to move forward to welcome more people into our Windup family, I think it is important that we, that I know current Councilwoman Mayani has been working on a diversity and inclusion council to ensure that everybody who moves to our city is seen and celebrated in their own way. And I think that I want to continue to work on that to ensure that everyone has a voice and a seat at the table and that everyone is treated equally and equitably when it comes to resources and community services as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike Isbicky.
Yeah, you know, again, you know, we, we keep echoing the same thing all night long. So I, I'm, I'm glad to see that, you know, the four of us are on the same page here. But, you know, we, we are a community of the people. People look to the community to, for support and for insight. And we need to keep that communication open. It's so imperative, whether you're white, black, yellow, green, it, it doesn't matter. You know, we're, we're a community of the people. And let's, whoever comes on for that council, let's, let's make sure that happens. I'll leave it at that because I'm gonna repeat everything everybody else said.
Thank you. And we are going to move into our last question before we take questions from the community. So of our community survey, various written answers demanded the need for our city to do more for historically oppressed populations, including Black Indigenous people of color, able-bodied people, English-only speakers, LGBTQ plus peoples, and the list goes on. Our city has historical roots in white supremacy. What are you doing to develop more cultural competency? And how do you plan to bring that knowledge to your position as a council member? And we will start with Kelly Stack.
Sure, so I, I know that I touched on this quite a lot in, in my last answer. But I think it's so important for any leadership of any area to be curious and to, like I said, be willing to learn, be willing to admit when you've made a mistake and to always approach conversations with an open mind and an open heart. So in my personal life, I, like I said, I do work for the state. There has been a big push to do more anti-racism work and to do more to affirm LGBTQ members of the population. I am one of very few members of that community who work at the state legislature. And I recognize that when you are a member of one of these communities, so I, the disability justice community, yeah, our Black Indigenous and people of color, all of our neighbors, all of our friends. It is so easy to see, I think, a bunch of white faces on the Zoom screen and feel like you're not being heard. And again, I just want to echo what Mike said and what I talked about before, that I am ready and willing to listen. I am ready and willing to admit when I am wrong. And I always want to do better and make sure that anyone who has not been heard feels heard. The disability justice principle of nothing about us without us is very important to me. I think that all policy decisions should be made with the most impacted people at the center. And I think a lot of this circles back to, like we've been talking about before, proactive engagement with residents, continuing coffee hours, continuing town halls, expanding ways for people to make their voices heard. And, you know, just continuing to be clear that we are ready to listen and we are ready to work.
Thank you. Nick Bevins.
When it comes to kind of understanding the past of Windup and the history that we have, I agree with Kelly that it is important that we open these conversations with an open mind and a open heart, that we understand the perspective and our history. As we move forward and as a teacher, I have, I'm a lifelong learner. I love learning and reading books and understanding, having conversations and making sure that my students in my classroom see and hear people that don't look or see, don't look or sound, excuse me, don't look and sound like themselves. It's important that we understand that we as people, we have different ways of our voice. We have different dialects, different languages, different skin tones, different skin colors. It doesn't matter. At the end of the day, we are all bones. We are all people. And as we move forward in, in that, I think it is important to continue to hold these conversations and coffee hours, be open and transparent, admit when we have done wrongdoing, be opening to learning and always be respectful and welcoming to anyone who wants to call Windup home or do business in Windup as well. I think it's important that we also make, that we, that we make moves to in, increase the number of typically oppressed or minority group that do business in Windup, that own businesses in Windup, increase our LGBTQ-owned businesses, increase our Black Indigenous people of color owned businesses and really celebrate everyone's, what makes everyone wonderful. And yes, thank you.
Thank you. And Rose Sherian. Oh wait, I'm so sorry, Mike Isbicky, my bad.
I thought I was next. Yeah, you know, Windup, everybody knows it is a historical city. We've got a lot of beautiful things from history that we've grown accustomed to. But, you know, everything has to change. Everything's changing. The world is changing. People are changing. And we have to look at this as a good thing. We, you know, we're all God's children. I'm gonna put it that way. You know, we are who we are. This is, this is who we are. And we all need to get along. We all need to participate together. The togetherness, the unity of human lives and people. We need, we need to bring that back. Yes, you know, twenty-five thousand people in this city, we're not all gonna agree with everything. I understand that. But if you take it as a whole, people, come on, let's, let's work together. If we cannot work together, we, we're gonna be nothing. I don't care who you have on council or who, who's gonna be the mayor in next term. But if we cannot come to some kind of determination to somehow work together, to work out the differences that we have amongst one another, we're not gonna go anywhere. We're, we're, we're not gonna do it. So I would hope that the communication and the unity between everybody within the city of Windup is going to prosper.
Thank you. And Rose Sherian now.
Thank you. I think education is key when it comes to diversity, having those tough conversations. If you ignore a problem, it's not just going to go away. There, and, and historically, we have had, you know, issues in Windup. You know, one of, one of the conversations I had was I, I met with the deputy police, chief of police. And, you know, we had the conversation about, you know, the protests, you know, that I attended, you know, the protest and, and asking why. And I explained why and he explained why, you know, you know, there's, there's conversations that need to be had and, you know, educating each other, spending time together, having empathy for one another, walking in somebody else's shoes. You know, celebrating even, you know, we don't, in my classroom, we don't celebrate just one holiday. We learn about all the holidays. And I think that's important, you know, to educate people about, you know, just, just having a conversation with your neighbor or, you know, just understanding where someone else is coming from. And I think that's, that's key to, to resolving a lot of issues. And I think a return to civility would be nice because the past few years, things have gotten very, very vitriol. So, you know, just, you know, getting back to that civility that we had is, is important.
Thank you.
At this time, it concludes the questions from the moderators. We're going to turn to Councilwoman Megan Mayani to take questions from the public.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for all of your questions. There was an overwhelming response from everyone. So I don't know if in this next 10 minutes we'll be able to get through all of the questions, but I will definitely get all of those questions on a Word document and get those out to those four candidates if we don't get through all of them. So that if they were to want to post that kind of stuff on their campaign pages, they can answer your question. So that if they were to want to post that kind of stuff on their campaign pages, they can answer your questions on their campaign pages for you in the future. So one question that did come up was for Kelly Stack. Kelly, you are on the planning commission. Are you willing to vote McKinley down once it reaches planning? Should you still be on the commission at that time?
That's a great question. I wouldn't know the answer to that right now because I haven't seen what the final drawings look like. If you were to hand me the project as it currently stands with the park being moved and the driveways being in way, arranged in ways that rape neighbors don't like, I would vote no. But there is a public hearing process first. So that is when everyone is able to share their public comments. And from there, the commissioners will work with the developer to see if there are ways that the plans can be restructured or redesigned. And I would want to take a look at those before I made any final vote and, you know, participate in the redrawing of, of the plan development.
Another question that was asked was related to, related to the cannabis. Could tax revenue from dispensaries expand our budget and allow us to do more for our residents? Nick, would you like to start with that question?
Sure. I think it is, the answer is yes. The, the revenue that we could generate from dispensary businesses in our community would absolutely add to that budget, giving us a less lean budget and more wiggle room to improve resident services, city services, our park and recreation opportunities, and many other facets within the city. But as we stated before, I think it is important when it comes to this issue that we bring it before our residents. It's important to know that it's not necessarily the only way that we can increase tax revenue to our city. We can think outside of the box and get creative in other ways. But in order to answer that, yes, it wouldn't impact our budget and give us more money to do more things with.
Thank you, Nick. Rose, would you like to weigh in on that?
I, I agree with Nick on that, that it would, it would help out financially. I feel kind of like people are going to do it anyway. I've heard complaints of residents saying that, you know, my neighbor is growing it in my, in, in their home and selling it and, or, or they may just drive to River Rouge and, and use their money there. But, um, but ultimately, like Nick said, I agree that it, it is up to the citizens of Wyandotte and it should be put to vote.
Mike, do you have any extra thoughts on that?
No, I, I would guess. I, I mean, it goes without saying, we definitely have the revenue. But I would definitely leave it up to the people of Wyandotte to decide whether they want it in their city or not.
And Kelly, anything else to add to their thoughts?
Nothing to add, just but I hope that the state takes the increased taxes that they are receiving as a result of marijuana legalization and brings that back into better revenue sharing to our localities.
Thank you so much for your answers. Another question we had was relating to private property. If it is private property owned by an individual after the city sells it, why is there any legal obligation to volunteer info about what is being built or going in on that property? Kelly, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So in the same way that you sign a purchase agreement when you are buying a home, but that's not the last step in the process. This is also not the last step in the process. I believe it is currently zoned as planned use development. I would have to double check my notes on that. But effectively, because we are turning this from a school into something new, whatever the new thing is, it does have to meet zoning requirements and planning requirements, which all come back to the city's strategic plan. So that is why when we're selling city-owned property, we do need such a specific list and agreement with the developer for what is going to be done and why it goes to the planning commission before it comes back to the council for a final vote.
Thank you, Kelly. And we'll just go in reverse order. Mike, would you like to add anything to that?
I, I think Kelly has explained that very well.
Rose, anything to add?
I agree with Kelly. You have to go by the zoning. Thank you.
And Nick.
I would agree with Kelly. She did a great job of explaining kind of the process in that, in that order. I think that it, beyond that, we want these developments to be functions within our community. We want them to be celebrated developments and things that our residents look forward to. So my hope would be that those developers on private property would want to inform residents of the upcoming business or the upcoming development to encourage a more warm welcome in their neighborhoods.
Okay. And our next question is relating to COVID. How was it allowed for many businesses to go past the governor's orders, which endangers many people? Do you agree with how this was dealt with in our city and some businesses being allowed to go against the governor's orders? Rose, would you like to start this question?
Yeah. So, um, safety is always number one to me, whether it's in the classroom or with the city, um, you know, public safety. It's, it's a very hard compromise between supporting small businesses and safety. But in the end, the rules are the rules. So if, if the governor issues a rule, then I believe you have to follow it. So I, I, you know, we follow the rules. So I, I, it's sad because I know a lot of these small businesses and the local establishments were struggling during the pandemic and, and we want to support them. But at the same time, you know, you know, it's, you have to follow rules.
Nick, would you like to weigh in on that question?
Sure. I, it is, public health and public safety is an absolute priority. A safe and healthy community leads to more tomorrows, right? So when we have rules that are put in place by a higher government, we as a local municipality need to, to our fullest extent, require that our residents and our business owners take part in those requirements as well, right? Our hands are tied on the local level. We need to enforce the rules, even if we don't agree with them. Should you not agree with them, it is still our responsibility as elected officials to ensure that those rules are implemented. And I know that when these decisions, when these rules came down, small business owners were struggling. The thought of closing their door for one day took an huge chunk of revenue out of their monthly budget. And I understand, and that is, and I cannot even imagine putting myself in their shoes, trying to understand the challenges and sacrifices that they have to make in order to keep that door open. At the end of the day, we have orders given to us by our governor. No matter if we agree with those orders or we disagree with those orders, those are our rules. And we as elected officials are those who, and our local law enforcement are those who enforce those rules.
Thank you, Nick. Kelly, would you like to weigh in on this question?
Sure. Yeah. So it's not really a secret that I think that coronavirus is one of the biggest problems facing Wyandotte and that a problem this big required from the outset, collaboration, communication, and cooperation between the federal, state, and local government. And that fell apart very quickly. I feel that Congress should never have gone on recess without passing sets of aid to small businesses. We put our local businesses in a horrible position by saying, good luck. Here are some rules. Please follow them. And then we asked our law enforcement agencies to enforce orders that were put into place, not by the legislative body, but by the Department of Health and Human Services, who has been issuing these orders following the Supreme Court decision last fall. What we have unfortunately seen is a number of people who say, well, if I have to go it alone, then I'm, I would rather take the fine. I would rather take the fee than shut my doors. And we should never, ever have put our small businesses in that place. This was a failure of the federal and state government. And so my heart goes out to our small businesses. I will continue to support you. I am sorry that this was handled the way it was by your higher up leaders. And I am hopeful that as a new city council member, I would be able to bolster relationships with folks in Lansing and DC and see what we can do to make sure that our small businesses are protected because COVID isn't gone. You know, the variants are starting to outpace the vaccines and we want to make sure that we are not hitting a fourth surge. So Wyandotte, please mask up, stay distant, stay with a pod. And small business owners, thank you for all that you're doing. And again, I'm so sorry that you felt that you had to go this alone. You never should have been put in that position.
Thank you, Kelly. And Mike, would you like to weigh in on this one?
Yeah, I would. And I don't even want, I mean, everybody's comment is absolutely wonderful. I backed it 100%. But when you talk about small businesses, please don't forget about your, your veteran organizations. We have several of them that are within the city of Wyandotte that have struggled, maybe even worse because working through the PLA V, I've attempted to try to get those small business loans. And we were denied on that because we are nonprofit. And we didn't constitute for underneath the regulations of a small business. But regardless to the fact, I mean, we're going to struggle, we're going to get through with the help of our community, our membership, and fundraisers that we're going to be planning in the future. But we need to, I lost my train of thought here for a minute. We need to look back and say, you know, what's, what's more important? The livelihood of our citizens or having a business open? Yeah, it was horrible that we had to go through what we had to go through and we're still going through it. I mean, today alone, there was over 8,000 cases. And if you look, I'm sure everybody gets the, on their Facebook for the local communities. Wyandotte had what, another 24 today alone? I mean, it's sad. And we're going to, we have to do something as a community as a whole. I mean, I know it hurts. It hurts our citizens. It hurts our small businesses. And it hurts our private organizations, our worship centers. I mean, nobody wants to go out and get this. I mean, I've got very close friends of mine that are in the hospital at this day that I don't know if they're going to make it to the next three days because we're on ventilators. So I mean, we, we need to pull together and pray to God that this is going to end very soon. Because it, it's just, it's horrific. And I, nobody can really relate until you've gone through it. But I mean, I, I wouldn't want my wife to be going through something like that. And I, I pray for those that have had to deal with this and had lost a loved one. And let's not forget council candidates, you know? Let's, let's take a moment to pray for these people, our citizens that we're losing day by day, day after day. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mike, for your thoughts. We are coming in on that 10-minute mark. So we have one more question. And I know we had over 20 questions and we were only able to get through four in that 10 minutes. So like I said, I will definitely get those out to those candidates so they could answer them if they would like on their campaign pages. So the final question is, how are we, in regards to the most recent social district that was implemented in Wyandotte? How are we keeping our citizens safe visiting downtown when people can drink everywhere, pretty much all day, every day downtown Wyandotte? And we will start with Mike today, or Mike for this question.
I, I have not yet had the opportunity to go downtown to see this new social district, district. I mean, revenue wise, yeah, it'd be good, going back into previous conversations and comments, you know? All right. So now we're taking alcohol from one establishment to another. And I mean, which is, which is fine. I mean, I, I understand that. But I, until I've been down there to actually observe that situation, I can't comment on that right now until I've seen it for, for myself.
Thank you, Mike. Kelly?
Sure. I want to come back to what Nick was talking about earlier about establishing some partnerships downtown with either ride share programs or Wyandotte taxi, anything like that. We need to ensure as in everything that we are balancing our business and the fund that we want to have and the safety of people. In most other cities that have social districts, it's sort of a big concrete square space or something like that, something more equivalent to the parking lot behind Whiskies. Wyandotte is kind of unique in that it spans several city blocks, which means that there is traffic ongoing and an ambulance route or two that passes through there. So we do have to be really careful. And I certainly would love to have these conversations with our enforcement officers. And yeah, like I said, if, if any ride share companies would be willing to sort of create a stand in a space where they will say, we are always here. You can leave your car here. No questions asked overnight. You will not be ticketed. You will not be towed. My biggest concern is with people being able to get home safely after they choose to participate in this. I do know that that was part of the decision to cut it off at 8:00 PM as opposed to later. I've had many folks ask why this doesn't go until 10:00. That is why we don't want to encourage overconsumption of alcohol. So yeah, like I said, I, I would be happy to have these conversations. And I think that it's something that we need to think very seriously about.
Thank you, Kelly. Nick?
Yes. As I said earlier, and as Kelly said, I would like to see partnerships with ride sharing services and taxi services, safer ways to get home so that we can ensure that people who are partaking in this are able to get home safely. But also to ensure that their safety while they're participating in the social district is happening as well. So when we, when we come up with ideas and implementations of programs like this or things like this, I think it's important that we take it. And I, and I'm sure that we, those who implemented the social district did take into account these things. But I would like to see more public awareness of it. I mean, they did paint on the ground and on certain trash cans to inform residents that the social district is ending. Here's the line, consume before you, before you leave this area. But just more public education on how we can safely keep this in our community.
Thank you, Nick. And Rose, do you can wrap this question up?
Yes, I, I agree that safety is number one, you know, and, and doing the ride shares. And like Nick mentioned earlier, having a hotel downtown would be nice to have, you know, if, if you drink too much and maybe have a place to stay. Ride share and something that we've talked about also, adding a bike lane, bike lane down Oak Street. So perhaps people could ride their bike to downtown rather than get behind the wheel. I know prior to COVID, reading the, the police, police blog, there was a lot of fights happening outside bars at, you know, late at night. So, and I think a lot of that is alcohol driven. So, um, you know, just safety first. I do know that it's appealing to have the social district that, you know, couples go down there and they're drinking and they're spending money in the small, the small shops downtown Wyandotte. So that, that's a plus. But you know, while they're doing that, we, we hope that they would be safe. And education is key, like Nick said, you know, educating people about, you know, please don't drink and drive or, you know, getting a ride home if you need one.
Thank you all so much for weighing in on those questions during the question and answer. I will turn it back over to our moderators, Maria and Spencer, to wrap up the evening.
Thank you. Yes. So just as a closing, you know, we really want to thank everyone so much for joining us. Thank you to the candidates who are here today. Thank you to Wyandotte J.C.'s. Thank you to Wyandotte Moving Forward, Joel, Maria, Megan. And thank you to the community who tuned in with us tonight. I hope that, you know, we were able to answer some of your questions. I hope that you were all able to see the contact information for all the candidates that were here today. And any questions that you might have for any candidates who weren't here, I'm seeing their Facebooks all over the place. And I'm sure that you can find a way to get in contact with them, to ask them any questions. And we really just want to encourage everyone to stay safe and, you know, make sure that you're distancing, wearing a mask, all of that good stuff, particularly when you head to the polls on May 4th. Yeah. And we hope that everyone has a good night.